Okay, great. Good morning, everyone. My name is Stephanie Marshall and I'm the City of Bend hearings officer assigned to this matter today. The file numbers are PZ 20-0186 and 0661. I forgot to mention today is Monday, November 30th, 2020, and it is just after 10:00 a.m. This is a quasi judicial public hearing on an appeal of an administrative decision approving the applications with conditions. The applicant does have the burden of proof and I'm going to go through at the end of my initial remarks here as to how the hearing will proceed as far as the sequence. Okay, so first off, I have no, I've had no ex parte contact with anyone involved in this matter or concerned with this matter. Ex parte contact means someone speaking or submitting something to me concerning the appeal or the approval outside of the public hearing. I have had communication with staff as far as establishing the date and time for the hearing, and I have reviewed some of the materials in the record, including the staff recommendation to the hearings officer, the appeal and the applicant's response to the appeal, as well as supporting materials for the initial application. I have no interest in the outcome of this appeal or the application. I have no interest in the property itself or any interest with respect to the applicant, the the appellant or any persons involved with those people and entities. At this time, if there are any objections to my hearing this matter, please raise them now. Okay. Hearing none. A couple of other comments I wanted to make is, as I mentioned earlier, this is an appeal. It's a quasi judicial hearing. My decision will be based on the standards set forth in the code or any other standards that you wish to bring to my attention. Please try to limit your comments to those standards. And if you have something you wish me to consider, the raise it or waive it rule applies, which means if, if you want me to consider it, it has to be before me while the record is open. And if it's not, and there's further appeal, no new issues, no new evidence can be raised at that time. So please make sure that you're thorough. I did have a question before the hearing started about time limits on presentation. I typically do not impose time limits on persons' presentations. I do ask that repetitive public comments, you know, be limited to the extent possible. And for those that have submitted written materials to staff which are in the record, I would appreciate it if you not read those because I will read those. So summarize your comments. I take notes, I review my notes and I review the record and then I write my decision. So with that, we will go ahead and the order of presentation. I will have Juan first with the city. He will go over the operation of Zoom and in how you can make sure that you're able to participate. Then I will hear from city staff and then the applicant and the appellant and any other members of the public. There's been a request after the completion of initial presentations that we have a short break. And after that short break, we will come back online for rebuttal. And then we'll discuss if there's any requests to leave the public record open at the conclusion of the hearing. So with all of that, Mr. Almeida, would you please give a short synopsis of how participation can occur with this Zoom format?
Absolutely, thank you. All right, so here I'm going to present some instructions for you. Thank you for joining us this morning. For those of you who are here via Zoom, please use the raise hand function that is in the middle of your screen when the time comes for you to provide your public testimony. We will unmute or provide you the ability to unmute yourself. You'll have to, so we'll allow you to unmute, but you'll have to unmute yourself. And we'll do it in the order that we see hands being raised. For those of you who are joining us by phone, please use the keypad on your telephone and dial the star key followed by the number nine. That will also show us that you have raised your hand and that you are wanting to provide public testimony. When the time comes, we'll also provide you the ability to unmute. You'll have to unmute yourself, you'll hear the instructions in your phone, on your phone, but the instructions basically tell you to press the star key followed by the number six to unmute yourself. Again, if you are joining us by phone, you'll dial the star key followed by the number nine to raise your hand and then when the time comes to unmute yourself, you'll press the star key followed by the number six to unmute yourself. Is there anything else you'd like me to go over, Madam Hearing Officer?
I don't have any questions. Is there any participant that has a question regarding participation at this point? Okay, hearing none. We'll turn it over to Ms. Anselman.
Thank you. I'll just sort of go over this briefly. First, I'm Sarah Anselman. For those who aren't familiar, I'm an associate planner for the City of Bend. Brief background on the applications. The tentative plan application was submitted on March 4th, 2020, and the waiver to public improvement standards application was submitted on August 11th, 2020, and both applications were deemed complete on August 24th. Approval for both applications was issued on October 19th, 2020, and there were five parties to the record. The notice of appeal was received on November 2nd, 2020, and the notice of the appeal hearing was mailed on November 9th. And as of today, I still have only received two public comments, which is what was in the staff report that has not changed as of this morning. The appellant met all supplemental requirements for the appeal within the 12-day appeal period, and the appellant has standing because he submitted comments to the record, both personally and through his attorney during the initial public comment period. The appellant raised four substantive issues and two other issues, which are described in the appellant's notice of appeal and which are addressed individually in the staff report. And I'll just very briefly summarize the issues raised for the attendees listening. The first assignment of error, the appellant states that the waiver to public improvement standards should not be approved and the decision should instead require the applicant to apply for a variance. Staff's response is that BDC, Bend Development Code, Chapter 3.4.200B variances states that a Class C variance may be granted only if a required improvement is not feasible due to topographic constraints, constraints posed by sensitive lands or the project does not meet the exception standards. The waiver request is not due to topographic constraints, constraints posed by sensitive lands, nor does the project meet the exception standards listed. Therefore, the request for a modified street section to Glen Vista Road must be processed as a waiver to public improvement standards. Assignment of error number two asserts that the decision failed to adequately address the appellant's argument that the proposed subdivision precludes development of an adjacent lot in accordance with the code. Staff's response is that the decision maker is not required, nor is it feasible to address all applicable code criteria on adjacent lots regarding their ability to develop. Development options are numerous and encumbrances may not be known. The proposed layout of Glen Vista Meadows does not preclude access to or from Glen Vista Road by any property nor access to utilities. Rather, the proposal will extend utilities to and through the development, which may be further extended to serve the abutting lots to both the east and the west. The third assignment of error states that the applicant's site plan shows the driveway for Lot 10 in the clear vision area. So the staff report that I uploaded to the record recommends revising condition of approval number 34 to include relocating the driveway approach out of the clear vision area. And the applicant has since submitted a revised plan showing that this is achievable by moving the shared property line with Lot 11, three and a half feet to the north and utilizing a narrower driveway. That plan has been uploaded to the record. The revised driveway is shown as 10 feet wide, which is the minimum width allowed per BDC 3.1.400H1. And the last assignment of error, the decision does not address the location of dry wells in relation to existing water wells. The original grading and drainage plan proposed a combination of swales and dry wells to accommodate runoff. The applicant has submitted a revised grading and drainage plan that has been uploaded to the record that eliminates all dry wells and illustrates that all drainage from the right-of-way improvements can be accommodated solely within swales. To accommodate the additional volume, the applicant increased the depth of the soils. There are two additional issues raised by the appellant. First, fees. An explanation of the fee calculation is included in the staff report and staff has completed a refund request for the long-range planning surcharge. And last, the appellant states that the hearing is de novo and that the appellant reserves the right to raise additional issues prior to the close of the record. Let me clarify that if the appellant did not raise an appeal issue within the notice of appeal, the new issue cannot be raised at the hearing because it would constitute a jurisdictional defect. In conclusion, the staff report recommends that the hearing officer dismiss assignments of error one through four and accept the revised condition of approval for assignment of error number three.
Thank you, Ms. Anselman. Okay, so now a presentation by the applicant, who I believe would be through Michael Robinson.
I think I'm actually going to take the first stab at this and I've got a presentation.
Correct, Ms. Marshall. Thank you, Joey.
Thank you, thank you, both of you. Joey?
Okay, so I hope you can see a slide deck here on your screen. Can you confirm, please?
I can see a cover sheet.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, great.
Okay, so good, good morning. Hearings Officer Marshall, my name is Joey Shear. I'm a planner with AKS Engineering, consultant for the applicant venture properties. I have just about 10 slides that address the appeal issues and I'm going to try to quickly run through them. And then we have several members of our team here who are able to answer any, any questions that you might have. I would like to begin by thanking you for your time this morning. And I also want to thank city planning staff, Sarah Anselman and Colin Stevens for their time and attention as we kind of put together the application, have worked our way through this, this process. And I'd also like to thank city engineering staff, Evan Malone and Chris Hennington, who have both been involved in this process as well. I'd begin by saying we agree with the findings and conditions in the staff report, including the two modified conditions of approval that are recommended by staff that Sarah just summarized in the supplemental staff report addressing the appeal issues. See if I can get these slides to switch. Okay. So this is the applicant's project team. It really has been a team effort in addition to working with city staff. We've coordinated with Swale Irrigation District and we just, we have this great group of professionals who have put this application together, several of whom are here to answer any questions, including Mike Robinson and my colleague Chris Chambers, who's the civil engineer for this project. So I'm going to try to avoid kind of providing a lot of background and avoid kind of covering the same ground that Sarah did. But here's just an aerial of the property again, four and a half, just under, excuse me, just over 4.4 acres, north side of Glen Vista, the edge of the UGB and the city limits here on kind of the north, northwest part of town. PZ 20-0185 approved a zone change from RL to RS earlier this year that was part of the initial application submittal, but that has been resolved. So our zoning is RS. And we have Riley Ranch Nature Preserve down to the west at the end of Glen Vista Road. This slide shows our subdivision layout with, with 20 lots meeting the RS standards. And I've included the approval layout for the Kiso Vista subdivision, which was approved in September of this year and also included a waiver of public improvement standards for the Glen Vista Road cross-section that was approved, that is the basis for our extension of that same cross-section. There were four appeal issues raised, which, which Sarah summarized. We received some late comments, I think, from Mr. Van Vactor, and it sounds like they're acknowledging that issues number three and four have been resolved. So I'll still go through all of them, but kind of, I guess, maybe setting aside any sort of detail around three and four, if the appellant is acknowledging that those have been resolved. So the first appeal issue is the Glen Vista Road cross-section, whether it's appropriate for the city to grant a waiver or if that requires a Class C variance. And I just want to make clear that the plain language of the code in BDC 3.4.150A, which I've copied here, allows waivers or modifications to the standards of Chapter 3.4. And what we're proposing to do is, again, like the subdivision approved to the east, is modify the collector cross-section for Glen Vista, which is found in Table A of that same chapter, 3.4. I don't know that there's much more to go into at this point. The, the language is pretty clear here in the code. It allows for waivers and modifications to standards of this chapter. The standard that we're proposing to modify is within the chapter, again, Table A in the cited section. And again, this is consistent with the waiver that was approved for the Kiso Vista subdivision just to the east. Appeal issue number two is that the proposal allows for the development of adjacent property in accordance with provisions of this code. That is the decision criteria that, that applies. And what we have is essentially the appellant asserting that our layout does not allow development of Tax Lot 101, which is the, the property, the appellant's property to the west or the Tax Lot 700, which is to the east. And we did submit a shadow plot of a future street plan showing kind of one of the very many conceptual development options for these properties. And I would just highlight a few of them here. As I said, as Sarah said, there are multiple options for development. And in this layout, we kind of tried to be conservative in our future street plan by showing a more traditional subdivision layout. But again, those are not the only options available to these properties. I would note that Tax Lot 101 there to the west has 160 feet of frontage on Glen Vista Road, which is enough width for a local street and a row of lots meeting the RS standards, which is kind of what we've, we've shown here. I think it, because of that amount of frontage, they actually have quite a bit of flexibility as far as their future development. And then the Kiso project to the east, shown here. At the time we submitted the application, it was a tentative plan that was under review, had not yet been approved. They did not provide any sort of connectivity for adjacent properties to the east or west. So in order to serve Tax Lot 700, we, we bring our, our street, a new local street, northwest Vista Meadow Lane, north from Glen Vista and then east kind of terminating in potentially a cul-de-sac that allows for that property to develop, that provides the frontage it needs because it, it currently only has 15 feet of frontage on Glen Vista Road, and that's not enough for a local street. So as I said, these are just one of many potential options for, for future development. Appeal issue three. Again, the, the appellant seemed to acknowledge that this is not really an issue any longer with the exhibits we proposed, just to walk through those exhibits. Essentially, we, we proposed to move the, the north, excuse me, the, the shared property boundary between lots 10 and 11, three and a half feet to the north, and then narrow the driveway approach for the driveway on Lot 10 to the minimum allowed, which is 10 feet. And by doing those two things, the driveway is located and the approach is located outside of the clear vision area. And I would, I would also note that clear vision is actually reviewed with infrastructure plans and, and building permits. So everything shown at this, at this time is, is purely conceptual. Appeal issue number four, as Sarah pointed out, we were able to basically remove the dry wells that we were originally showing, keeping the exact same footprint of the proposed stormwater swale. So no changes to the layout, to the street alignment, to the lots, simply just making them a little bit deeper from six inches to 30 inches, and that's able to accommodate all the stormwater that would be generated there on the site. So we support the two modified conditions of approval. I think those, those show that the decision criteria in both of these cases can be met. And with that, we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. And again, we agree with their findings and conditions. Now, we've provided a lot of material, including these supplementals, and all of these materials constitute substantial evidence that the applicable criteria are met. If you have any questions about kind of any aspects of, of our application or these supplemental materials, please give us a chance to answer those here during the, the hearing process. As I said, several members of our team are here to answer those questions. And again, we thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shear. Who is next with respect to applicant presentation?
I think that's it, unless Mike, you have had any, anything to add at this point?
Ms. Marshall, I don't, but I'll just echo what Joey said. If you have questions, ask us before you close today's hearing, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think you're muted, Hearings Officer.
Operator error. Thank you. Okay, thank you to the applicant. Now we will turn it over first to the appellant and then we will see if other members of the public wish to provide their own testimony and presentation. So Mr. Van Vactor?
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
And is my, my PowerPoint presentation visible?
It is to me. Anyone else have issues seeing the presentation on the screen?
It looks good. Alrighty, thank you. Good morning, for the record, my name is Will Van Vactor. I represent the appellant, Mike Knoll. We're here today primarily on two issues, which I'll get into, but I'll just make a quick note. First, regarding standing. As, as Ms. Anselman noted, there's no issue regarding standing. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but just wanted to note that Mr. Knoll's been involved in the process from the beginning and timely filed an appeal form and the proper appeal fee. Moving on to the appeal issues. I think the, both the applicant and Ms. Anselman correctly described generally the substantive appeal issues. And as Mr. Shear noted, I think with the proposed modifications that the applicant has suggested in, in a letter from their legal counsel, Mr. Robinson, I think the appeal issues regarding number three and number four have, or should be adequately resolved. So really today, we're here on two issues. Number one and number two, as presented on the, on the slide here. The first issue is whether or not the city must require the applicant to apply for a variance rather than a waiver. And this is relating to Chapter 3.4 of the code. The second issue relates to whether or not the applicant adequately addressed, whether or not adjacent properties can be developed in accordance with the Bend Development Code. So moving on, I'm going to start with the waiver versus variance issue. Just some quick background. The applicant requested a waiver to the transportation improvement standards for Glen Vista Road, allowing the applicant to modify and reduce the required pavement width to a substandard width of 36 feet. At the time of application, the TSP listed Glen Vista Road as a major collector roadway. For major collectors, the code requires 56, 56 feet of pavement width, including two 14-foot travel lanes, a 16-foot middle turn lane and two 6-foot bike lanes. However, pursuant to the applicant's request, the city approved a waiver allowing Glen Vista Road along the front edge of the subdivision to be developed at a substandard width of 36 feet without a center turn lane and substandard travel lanes. This requested exemption is a significant deviation from the current road standards. It poses safety concerns and threatens the ability of Glen Vista to serve the area. While those, you know, safety and service are important issues, really the question here today for, for the hearings officer is whether or not a variance is required instead of a waiver. I think it's important to kind of look at the language, language in the, in the whole of Chapter 3.4. The applicant kind of skipped over some important language in, in Section 3.4.200B, which I'll get to in just a minute, but I'll start with when a waiver is allowed. Under the code, a waiver may be granted if the standards of this Chapter 3.4 and/or the City of Bend standards and specifications can't be met. And then there's a list of criteria that apply when a waiver or that, that an applicant needs to meet to be entitled to a waiver. Moving on through Chapter 3.4, you get to subsection or section 3.4.200, which includes subsection B, which requires a variance to transportation design guidelines included in that section, that section 3.4.200. And so just as a quick note, the, that section, 3.4.200 includes road standards for the residential zone. I think it's Table A and it spells out where that, the 56-foot pavement width is required, as well as other road standards that would apply to this, in this zone. So just at first blush, 3.4.200B would appear to be a more specific requirement that a variance be applied for when you want a, a, any sort of exemption to the road standards. I, I guess now's a good time to jump into one of the arguments made by the applicant, specifically that 3.4.200B only applies to transportation design guidelines. However, this, this argument's a little misplaced. As the applicant noted itself, the term transportation design guidelines only shows up in the code in this section. So if you extend the applicant's argument out, then the, the variance requirement would never apply because this code section, apparently there are no transportation design guidelines. 3.4.200 very clearly applies to transportation improvement standards, including pavement width. And in this case, what the applicant is seeking is an exemption to those transportation improvement standards. This is further underscored if you look at the, the whole of Section 3.4.200B. It includes a site to the variance criteria in Chapter 5 of the Bend Development Code, specifically, I think it's 5.1. Hold on one sec, 5.1.400B, which is titled variance to transportation improvement requirements. The city's using some mixed language, but it's very clear when you look at Section 3.4.200B and you, you read the, the links to or the decided variance criteria, that the intent is that the transportation improvement standards be exempted only by a variance. Next, the city's rationale for why waivers proper likewise fails for a similar reason because it similarly renders this variance requirement meaningless. In the decision, it was concluded that because the applicant can't get a variance due to topographic constraints. Hold on one second, sorry. Yeah, due to topographic constraints. Or constraints posed by sensitive lands or the project does not meet the exception standards listed herein. That's just, those are the standards to get a variance. Under the city's rationale, if you if you can't meet those criteria, that that's okay. You just get a waiver. But that's that's not the intent of of this code section. The code section is intended to be read as this is how you get a variance. You can get a variance if the improvement, the required improvement is not feasible due to topic graphic constraints or constraints posed by sensitive lands. That's not, this isn't reading into it that if you can't meet those, you get a waiver. Renders this subsection be meaningless. Additionally, if you look at the whole of section 3.4200, you can see further evidence that the drafters of this code section intended a variance to be a requirement for any exemption to the road improvement standards that the applicant is is seeking here. If you look down into subsections. Subsections. P and I believe it's it may be F, sorry. I think it's P and F relating to special setbacks and grades and curves. Those two subsections within bin development code 3.4.200 specifically note that the applicant can seek a waiver if they need an exemption to those standards. None of the other standards listed in 3.4 3.2.400 includes similar language regarding a waiver. Instead, the the variance requirement would apply, including to the standards that the applicant seeks an exception to here relating to the road improvement standards, including street width and and the cross section as required by that table, table A, which covers residential zone improvement standards. So in sum, regarding this this first appeal issue. A careful reading of the code shows that a variance is required for this type of exemption. The more specific variance requirement relating to road standards should apply over the more general waiver, a language found in another section. And in a careful reading of the entire code shows that these aren't, this isn't intended just to apply to road design guidelines, whatever those may be. That term was intended to cover all of the improvement standards in that section 3.4200 unless, as I noted previously, there was the allowance of a waiver as there is for special setbacks and grades and curves. So with that, I'll move on to the second appeal issue. This issue relates to bin development code, section 4.3.300 E2. This section requires that the proposal allow for the development of adjacent property in accordance with the provision of this code. I just want to state initially, we're not we're not asking the applicant or the city to put together a full development plan for the adjacent properties. However, in this case, with our initial submittal in September before the decision was issued, we identified four or five specific issues in which we stated that we didn't believe that Mr. Knoll's property or in some instances, the property to the east would be able to develop in accordance with the code. Specifically, those issues were are those provisions in the code that we are concerned about. The adjacent properties being able to develop in accordance with include the transportation improvement standards, the block perimeter and connectivity requirements and the minimum density requirements. These issues in the decision were not were not addressed. There was this kind of a cursory statement that, well, there's road frontage, so it's all good, but that that doesn't address the specific concerns we are we raised. And and because of that, the applicant hasn't met his burden of proof in regard to proving that adjacent properties can be developed in accordance with the code as required by section 4.3.300 E2. The applicant previously pulled up. Oh, it looks like I'm having a little technical difficulty with my my slide here. I'll just describe this is this was a future street plan submitted by the applicant. I think it's similar to the one that Mr. Shear presented. One thing I'll note that is different, and unfortunately, I'll I'll try to submit a PDF of my my PowerPoint into the record, so this slide will hopefully be visible, but Mr. Shear's slide didn't show the canal and the setback or the easement for the canal. And also importantly, in both instances, the the future street plan shows a road coming into Mr. Knoll's property that does not does not exist. As as we noted in our initial submittal. Mr. Knoll's property is subject to significant constraints, including the canal that I mentioned earlier and associated easements, as well as topography that make development of his property extremely difficult. I shouldn't say extremely difficult, but difficult. And the proposal from the applicant in this case makes makes sure that development will not be possible in accordance with the code. Moving on, this was this was a proposed site map for the subject property in which a road is shown on the far western boundary that would have allowed for a shared road along Mr. Knoll's eastern property line and the subject property's western line. Importantly, something similar was suggested by city staff to the applicant when they applied for or when they when they conducted their pre-application meeting. The 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 memo from staff in regard to that pre-application meeting noted something to the effect of how is how is tax lot 101 going to develop? Tax lot 101 is Mr. Knoll's lot and then suggested a road similar to this where there would be shared shared access to the two properties. What's important about this is that it opens up the opportunity for Mr. Knoll to develop his property and meet density requirements, transportation improvement standards and and block perimeter and connectivity requirements. As it stands now with the proposed subdivision in front of the hearings officer today, it seems very likely, if not almost certain, that Mr. Knoll will not be able to to meet those those code requirements. The bottom line is this code requirement requires that the applicant demonstrate that subject that adjacent properties can be developed in accordance with the code. It's their burden to do so. We aren't asking for a full development plan, but we have identified four specific issues that we do not believe Mr. Knoll or even the adjacent property to the east will be able to comply with if the subdivision is approved as proposed, and they have yet to respond to those arguments, specifically block perimeter and connectivity and density. This is this this map is just a depiction of how a shared access road with the subject property would allow for Mr. development of Mr. Knoll's property in accordance with the constraints that exist on his property, including the canal, which you can see running more or less north, south through his property and then the lava rock. Lava rock that his residence is located on top of now. But with the proposed subdivision, that will not be will not be possible. Just a couple of quick, a couple more comments on this appeal issue. There there's a suggestion in the decision or maybe it was the applicant that a road can just be put in along the western boundary and a row of lots can can go in on Mr. Knoll's property. Again, that doesn't take into account those constraints that I talked about previously, including the canal and the lava rock. As a result, the the response is is non-responsive. The the city and the applicant have failed to submit the necessary evidence to show that the adjacent lots are in fact developable. I also want to note that reliance on a future street plan is not is not proper. What this code criteria is geared towards is making sure that adjacent properties are developable at the time the application or the the subdivision is approved, relying on some future street plan and roads that may or most likely will not ever be built. Doesn't help demonstrate that Mr. Knoll's or the tax lot 700 to the east are currently developable. I think I've covered most of what is on that on that slide, so I'm just going to go ahead and summarize this issue. As I've noted, there were four specific issues raised on behalf of Mr. Knoll and an initial submittal made in September. Those issues have not been addressed. And the applicant has yet to submit any evidence or demonstrate how those code criteria can be met met by Mr. Knoll or the owner, property owner to the east. And for that reason, the application should be denied under this standard. As as noted previously, issues number three and four, in reviewing the applicant's submittal, it appears that those issues have been been addressed. I would just note that regarding the dry wells, the city engineer should confirm that the proposed modification to the application conforms with the city standards as, excuse me, as required by BDC 3.4.500A. Finally, I'm just going to touch on the appeal fees and hearings officer deposit. Mr. Knoll paid a total of over $20,000 to hear these appeal, have these appeal issues be heard. That includes two appeal fees, two long range planning surcharges and a hearings officer deposit. The city has indicated, as I believe Ms. Anselman noted, at least one of those long range surcharge surcharge fees will be reimbursed, but that's still a significant fee to have a limited, albeit important, a number of issues addressed. And I think what what's particularly concerning is that the applicant conceded two of the issues that we raised on appeal that should have been a basis for denial in the first place. So it shouldn't have been Mr. Knoll who filed this appeal and had to incur these expenses, especially out of the fact he requested early on that this be processed as a type three application so that he could have a public hearing in the first place. Regarding the hearings officer deposit, he had to pay almost $12,000 as a hearings officer deposit. Again, since the application should have been denied, he shouldn't have been burdened with paying that deposit, although he may get some of that back. I think perhaps the most concerning part about that is $12,000 is a significant sum of money. And most members of the public are not able to pay that upfront. And so appeals with merit are at risk of not being being heard. I know that Deschutes County charges, I think, half that or even even less than that as a hearings officer deposit. So that's a significant sum of money. And for those reasons, we ask that the appeal fees and hearings officer deposit be refunded. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. You might have.
Okay, just making sure I'm unmuted. Thank you, Van Vekter, Mr. Van Vekter. I did have one question regarding the first appeal issue. And I didn't hear this in your presentation regarding the fact that the that there was a waiver to public improvement standards approved for the Kiso Vista subdivision that was approved just a couple of months ago this year. And so we need the the roads to match, so to speak. Can you briefly address that?
Yeah, I can. I think it's a very fair. Oh, I got, I'm getting feedback here. Can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Okay, that that's a good question. It's something I think I touched on briefly in my written submittal, but I don't think I did during my oral presentation. I'm not being dismissive when I say this to your question because it's a good question, but it it doesn't matter for this application what previously what previously was approved. The question, as I see it, is whether or not a variance should be required. That a waiver was previously approved, perhaps wrongfully, as no no real bearing on the application that's in front of you today. Does that does that help a little bit?
Yes, yes, I I I anticipated that argument. I might have even read it in your in your written materials, but I just wanted to make sure that there was anything else you wanted to add on that front, and I appreciate your addressing that. I don't have other questions at this point. We'll go ahead and hear from any other members of the public that wish to testify. And we'll see after after that and a brief recess what the applicant might say in response as well.
Hears officer, if it's okay, my client, Mr. Knoll, would like the opportunity to to speak. Is it okay if he follows follows me?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
All right, I'll have you.
I was all set up on the other side of the table, so.
No, do you want me to? I can move that over. I can move that over if that's easier.
Yeah, maybe it would be. Now I'm going back to the other thing again. My name is Mike Knoll and I am the the appellant in in this matter and and let me start by asking your forgiveness for the fact that I'm not going to be nearly as organized as the speakers that's gone before me and those that will follow, I'm sure, but I'd like to start by not reading my letter or anything close to that, but just kind of going through the high points of the letter that I've submitted as part of the record for for this proceeding. And the before doing that, like to point out that the first part of of this whole process with the development of property next door was a rezone. was a, a rezone and, um, there was, um, a little bit of a, a neighborhood opposition to the rezone and, um, I think I was the only person in the neighborhood that was supportive of the rezone, uh, primarily because it was a, uh, something that had to be done, uh, is the issue of zoning not being compatible with the, the underlying, uh, comprehensive plan. And so I, I only say that so that, uh, you don't understand that I'm, I'm not, uh, you know, just, uh, somebody who's bouncing off the walls and don't want anything to happen. It's a, it's a given that our neighborhood is going to change. And, uh, you know, the, the question is exactly how that, that change is going to go. I, I'd like to start, uh, again paraphrasing my letter, uh, addressed to you, Ms. Marshall. And, uh, my first paragraph says, uh, Mr. Robinson, uh, who is, uh, present with us here today. Is that present when we're all, we're, okay, who's with us on this, uh, on this, uh, podcast? Mr. Robinson writes on page three of his letter, quote, "First, BDC 4.3.300E.2 simply requires the application to show that the proposal allows for the development of adjacent properties in accordance with the BDC." And, um, what I write at that point is, we agree, um, that, uh, the applicant is required to show that, um, that our property can be developed. And, um, I don't, uh, I don't think they've even come close to, to doing that. I, I don't know that we're in agreement, but it, it would appear that the easiest way, uh, to show that our property could be developed would be to, um, uh, give us a plan that's truly workable, uh, that would demonstrate that it, it can be done. They, uh, submitted a plan and, uh, and I don't know if, if Will can, uh, possibly bring up the shadow plat. Do you have that in there anywhere? And anyway, they submitted a shadow plat, uh, which is what, uh, we would expect them to do to, to demonstrate that our property could be developed. And, um, basically it, uh, it showed, uh, a road coming in from the, uh, from the east. I'm sorry, from the west that, um, uh, doesn't exist at all. And, um, it, uh, as it comes into our property, it, it, uh, drops down heading south along our property line and, um, it, uh, goes over a, a very large rock knob. And, um, from there, uh, proceeds out to intersect, uh, Glendysta Road. And then they show a series of, uh, of lots coming off of that, um, off of that road and the, um, sorry, I didn't mute my phone. And, uh, the, the specific, uh, things that, uh, that I note, uh, why this doesn't even come close to working. Uh, first, it does assume, um, that, that there's a road, uh, coming from, uh, off our property, uh, and outside the city limits. And the road, of course, doesn't even exist. The part of the road that, uh, that is on, uh, our property, uh, couldn't be constructed by itself. And in other words, if they, uh, we just tried to bring the road in from Glen Vista Road up the side of our, uh, our property, then, uh, the road had not, uh, yet been constructed, uh, for the turn to go out to the county. It would have to have a turnaround and a turnaround couldn't be accommodated because there's, uh, there's nothing that's flat enough, uh, for a turnaround up there. I think, um, Will has put on the screen, uh, I don't know. Ms. Marshall, can you see what he's got on the screen? Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking at. We're good. Okay. So, uh, yeah, the, uh, the light color, of course, is the proposed subdivision and then, um, the, uh, the kind of blue snake thing heading through the, um, heading, you know, all the way across the, um, uh, what's showing on your screen there. That's, uh, uh, the canal and, and most of what it's showing is the easement and you can see that easement going through our property. And, um, what, uh, what we have to try to picture is these lots that are very lightly shown on the lower, perhaps two thirds of the, the drawing there. That's what they're proposing to be, the, uh, the building areas. And, um, and then of course, um, with the road on the, uh, the proposed road on the, uh, east side of the property, whatever building area there might be would be on the west side, uh, of the property. And very little would be available, but more importantly, uh, somehow, uh, people would have to get from their home built, uh, down on the lower part, uh, across the, uh, canal and the easement and, um, and then get to the access road to get out to Glen Vista. The, um, I talked to a representative of the, the, uh, swallow irrigation and just confirmed the fact that, uh, it's not their policy to, uh, to abandon canals or easements. In fact, they just don't do it. There may be a point in the near future where this canal is piped, but they, they definitely wouldn't, uh, reduce their easement. Point being that there's, um, uh, you know, a handful of reasons why this is absolutely unworkable, not even considering, um, you know, Will's, you know, uh, points about connectivity and block length and all that sort of thing, some of which might have to be, um, taken into consideration on any plan, but, uh, yeah, this plan where there's no room to do a partial, uh, short-term fix because we don't have a turnaround. We don't have access, uh, to the neighbor's property to, uh, to do the road there, not to mention the fact it wouldn't go anywhere. So, you know, their, their attempt at a shadow plat is, uh, is really pretty, uh, pretty useless. Mr., uh, Will had shown, uh, a depiction of what we could do on our property and, uh, that would assume that the road that is shown, um, uh, on the, uh, on your screen right now, that the road would be moved to the west, uh, so that it could be a shared road. And, um, again, as, as Will said, that, that layout was originally proposed, uh, during the pre-op meeting and, uh, yeah, the, um, what Ms. Anselman wrote at that time was, "How will tax lot 101 develop?" "The proposed north-south road, um, would need to shift, uh, west to provide future frontage and set up the tax lot, uh, for development." "The city would likely allow a 50-foot dedication that would be on, um, on the, yeah, subject property here with three-quarter improvements and then the remaining 10-foot dedication improvements to be installed when, uh, tax lot 101, my property, uh, develops." So, uh, right, right from the get-go, um, you know, this, uh, uh, layout that, uh, the street layout that, that we're advocating was, uh, presented, you know, to the, uh, to the applicant and, uh, you know, apparently they just ignored it and charged ahead with, uh, with their plan here. Additional, uh, plans, um, or, I'm sorry, additional concepts that, uh, also lend toward moving the street, uh, you know, to the, to the west, uh, would be that, uh, it puts it in, uh, greater, uh, conformity with the, uh, with the city standards, uh, for connectivity, for block length, for, uh, a number of these things. For example, 3.1.200D, um, uh, calls for complete blocks bounded by a connecting network or streets. Well, uh, under the plan that, that we're advocating with the street, uh, along the, um, the common property line, um, you know, the, the street would then be, become the bounding along that side. Uh, under the plan that they're submitting, uh, the only street that's the, or the only, uh, side that's bounded by, uh, by a street is, is Glen Vista, which of course is, you know, already there. Somehow they've gotten, gotten off the hook on having a street at all on the, uh, on the east side and, and, uh, with a substitution of a, a walkway, I guess. They've also, uh, gotten off the hook in terms of having, um, you know, a through street, uh, going to the north, also, uh, you know, required by uh, block length and connectivity, uh, you know, just a number of things there, but some of the point, I guess, being that some of those, uh, things would be alleviated. Uh, you know, if the street was moved to the, uh, to the, um, western part of their property. Glen Vista Meadows, uh, then the east-west part of it would, uh, would then become a, a through street, uh, instead of, uh, uh, you know, being one that just loops around and, and goes back out to, to Glen Vista. There's quite a bit of more information, um, Ms. Marshall, in the letter that, uh, that I have sent, um, to you and, and, uh, I look forward to you, uh, reading that. I took note of a couple of other, uh, code sections, uh, here that, uh, I don't think there's any point in reading them into the record. So they'll be on the, uh, in my, be in the record from my letter. You know, the, um, sort of what they say, the bottom line on, on all that is that, um, you know, if this goes in, um, my property won't be, uh, developable. I'd like to, uh, quote again from, uh, Mr. Robinson's letter on page, uh, three. He says that tax lot, uh, 101, and again, is, uh, is our property. He says that that tax lot, the development is completely dependent on its inherent ability, uh, relevant. I guess it's, uh, inherent ability, uh, to adhere to the development code standards and nothing about the application changes that fact. Well, the thing that changes is, uh, you know, what we're requesting is kind of like, uh, to and through, uh, which I think everybody here has familiarity with, um, you know, the, uh, the applicant is, um, uh, doing their to and through requirement on Glen Vista Road, uh, but it's the same type of thing, uh, here. As this, as this whole area is built out, um, going from the, uh, the Key South property, which is the earlier subdivision that, um, that was approved to the subdivision under consideration here and then on to our property, um, one development, uh, must consider the next. That's, uh, not only the way it works here, but it, that's how it typically works, should work anyway, through the city. So we don't end up with, uh, you know, all kinds of issues that have to be, uh, modified and, uh, you know, considerations made because of what was previously done. Uh, there's all kinds of sections in the Ben Development Code that deal with, uh, connectivity, organization of blocks, traffic, uh, circulation, utilities, all these things that when you go from one property to another, these all have to be, uh, considered. So, uh, when, uh, Mr. Robinson writes that, uh, you know, there's, there's, uh, nothing that's, uh, that's changing when they, uh, if they were to put this road where they want it. Uh, yeah, everything is changing, uh, you know, uh, uh, they have a, a responsibility to develop in a way that, uh, you know, all these things that are in the development code can be met. You know, I think that's probably, probably leaving a lot out. I was going to say the, the, uh, the essence of what our argument is, but it's at least a part of what our argument is. And, um, uh, again, I, um, you know, the bottom line on this is, um, you know, we're, we're not trying to be obstructionist. Uh, we just would like to see things get, get done correctly. Maybe I will, uh, you know, just, uh, because there's the issue of the street, um, Glen Vista Road and, uh, the, um, the fact that they want to, uh, change the standards there, that's going to make things considerably, um, you know, less expensive, I would, uh, for them. Uh, I would ask you to, uh, look at my, uh, letter. I think it was from, uh, December 15th, um, you know, where I comment on, um, uh, you know, how this, the standards that they're wanting to waive or the changes they want to make and how that dovetails with the fact that they're going to have houses fronting on, um, Glendysta Road, uh, backing up to an alley, which they acknowledge is the access for these homes. And, uh, there, there's no provision for, uh, for parking. There's no parking on the street. There's no parking, uh, opportunity to park in the alley except for, um, you know, um, possibly in front of your garage, depending on, on how far back your garage is. No guest parking or anything like that. The street is going to be, uh, not only no parking, but they want to do away with the, with the, uh, left turn lane. And, uh, oh, and then we probably have to consider the fact that all these homes now are potentially duplexes. Uh, so, um, yeah, just, I mean, there's creating a disaster and I think that this whole idea, it starts with this whole idea that they're going to, uh, you know, have very reduced, uh, a street frontage on, um, or, um, I guess it's right away on Glendysta Road. And again, I, I would ask that you look at my letter that I submitted as part of the record. And, uh, whether, you know, these, these kinds of things should be, uh, should be changed. Yeah, doesn't, doesn't seem appropriate at all. Now, I think, I guess I think I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. I do appreciate your presentation and, um, I will state, uh, that, uh, when I am reviewing everything, I will touch every single piece of paper that's in the record and, and review everything. Um, and, and actually this might be kind of out of order, uh, but I would ask both the applicant and, uh, the appellant to ensure that the materials, uh, the, the slideshows and all that were presented today, uh, be, uh, provided to Ms. Anselman so that she can upload those into ePlans and the, they'll be part of the record. Um, obviously this is being recorded, but, um, it's, it's also helpful to have that there via ePlans. So thank you. And uh, anyone else from the appellant? I do note that I have two people with hands raised. Is there anyone else for the appellant that will be presenting today? Okay. I will go over to, uh, the attendees. I see that there are hands up. Um, Juan, please help here. I don't see, oh, three people have their hands raised, but I can't identify who those persons are. Uh, if you wouldn't mind, uh, uh, If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Omega, helping me allow each one of these folks in order that they raise their hands to present today.
Lovely. Thank you. First, we have Lori. Lori, I'm going to go ahead and provide you the ability to unmute yourself. Let's proceed with your comment. For everybody, we ask that you provide us your full name and your physical address for the record. Thank you so much. So Lori, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, I was going to chat.
Oops. Lori, are you there? I think you might have muted yourself by accident.
Okay.
But there you are.
I wanted to chat through my phone line instead of my Zoom line. Does that matter? I guess it doesn't matter, I guess, as long as you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name's Lori Kendall. I live on 20085 Cheney Road in Bend, Oregon, which is a side street off of Glen Vista. We've lived here over 20 years, so I've seen a lot of what's going on on the street on Glen Vista. My concern is that there is not a comprehensive plan that the city is following for this area. And that Glen Vista Road is not being considered fully as a major connector as it was applied for under the application. And the standard should be under the major connector and not many secondary. It should be a pound.
Ms. Marshall may interrupt.
Yes.
I I apologize, Ms. Marshall, for interrupting, but I I think it's important that we hear Ms. Kendall's testimony, and she's fading in and out. So I don't know if you were having the same problem.
I am, and I was just about to say something. Mr. Omega, I don't know if there's anything you can do on your end or if we just request that Lori, if you can put the micro your your mouth closer to the microphone. Not only am I taking notes, but this is also being recorded, and other participants here are are also likely taking notes and to address their comments. And and I'll say that I understand. I I heard what you said about where you live and Glen Vista and the city not following a comprehensive plan for the area and something about Glen Vista and major connector standards. That's what I heard. The rest of what you might have said, I missed.
Okay, I'll I'll try and fix my communication line here.
Perfect. I appreciate it.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, I think there should be a comprehensive plan followed by the city for this whole area. I've lived here for over 20 years, and it looks like it's starting to become a mishmash of developers putting in their applications separately, and the city is approving them without really consideration of the whole area. Glen Vista Road was developed a long time ago. It's partially in the city, partially in the county. It's not a it's under this application. It is a major connector, not a just a collector. I'm sorry, a major collector, not just a collector. So those standards should be followed by the major collector because that's what their application was under. The city may have changed that a bit recently, but that's the standards for the application. Just because the KISO property was approved with a waiver, it doesn't mean there's adequate standards were met. And that property, I think, has nine houses or 10 houses. I'm not quite sure at this point. This property is looking at 20 lot subdivision. The Glen Vista Road, those safety concerns, there should be sidewalks that should be adequately developed for this whole neighborhood and not just each little piece of property that they're developing. Like when the Rimrock Riders Development on OB Riley Road was put in, they're still building, and that was 15 years ago. So these things should all be looked at as part of the area and the comprehensive plan for the city. Not just waived and say the standards don't mean anything because the city code should mean something for all the neighborhood. And it doesn't seem like the city is allowing that to happen by just taking these little pieces and and developing them separately. We're concerned is the the road on Glen Vista has a lot of safety concerns. There's a lot of foot traffic. If these variances are waived or these no sidewalks are put in and the street doesn't have to widen, then these people that are walking up and down Glen Vista Road to get to Riley Preserve, you know, right now, it's a problem. We have, you know, stop on the road so that people don't get hit because they're walking on both sides of the road, and you meet up with pedestrians going coming and going from Riley Preserve, and there's no sidewalks anywhere. So I think this whole area needs to be a comprehensive plan made as opposed to these little tiny developments with, you know, now I'm hearing that there's duplexes as opposed to homes being put in, which means double the amount of people would be put in. That's obscene for this area. It's like putting the cart before the horse if you're not going to develop the roads and the infrastructure for the amount of people that are going to be coming and going. And I believe now Glen Vista has no no signs that say no parking on either side of the road. So people are now allowed to just park wherever they nearly, nearly want to, which blocks the small road to begin with. It's not a large road. It's not a developed road. It's a small rural country city road, and it needs to be developed properly. And I think it needs to be developed, you know, starting from OB Riley down. If they're going to be doing this area, they need to take it into consideration for the foot traffic for all the people, not just for these three developments that they want to push through. Let's see, the, you know, the plan should be should show the impact on the whole neighborhood on these developments. They shouldn't just be one at a time. And there's a pump station on the KISO property that I have to say smelled all summer long. It's not adequate. If they're going to be using this pump station, it needs to be looked at also because, you know, the city, the people that live across the street, when you drove by, it just smelled terrible. We called the city. We let them know. There wasn't much that they did. It just smelled all summer long. So I think there's a few things as living in the neighborhood that should be looked at and taken into consideration. And these waivers and the standards and the codes should be met, and they shouldn't be waived on. They should not. They should be set in stone, and it should not be just merely, you know, let's approve it just because it's here, like the KISO approval was done. You know, the street was not considered. Glen Vista Road, the development of the sidewalks and the road sections and the signs all need to be considered. And I think that's, you know, my concern is the safety for pedestrians, the volume of cars being parked on the streets and all those things, and that's really it. And I would like to keep the record open, so if any of the neighbors want to send a letter in, is that feasible to ask for now?
Ms. Kendall, we will address that at the end of the hearing after all testimony has been presented. But I have a note here to circle back, and part of that will be, if the record is left open, will be looking at the calendar and planning out dates for deadlines.
Okay, my I have to go to work, and so I can't stay on the line until it's over because I don't know how long this hearing is going to take.
Well.
That can be noted and just.
Yeah, let's see. Sarah, are you if you're online? Did you want to, I mean, is there something you can? How how can we let folks know that are participating right now? And if they have to jump off before the hearing is closed, is there a way that we can let folks know if the record is open and deadlines?
I have Ms. Kendall's email address, so I can email her.
Great.
Okay. Whatever's decided upon.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kendall. Looks like we still have a few more attendees that wish to participate. Juan, if you could call on the next person, please.
Absolutely. Next, thank you. Next, we have a phone caller. Area code 541 and prefix 771. You should now be able to unmute yourself by pressing the the star key, followed by the number six. 541771. You'll need to press the star key, followed by the number six to unmute yourself. One more time, 541771. There you go. Go ahead, full name and press, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is Daniel Kiso, 20214 Glen Vista Road, Bend, Oregon. My wife and I own the property that we are intending to subdivide as KISO Vista. And I don't know, I guess, where to start. I can understand Ms. Kendall's thing, but we have to look at what is practical. And if every requirement for an amendment to standards requires a variance, then basically you're eliminating all these small properties from being able to develop. And yet, that was taken into consideration when this area was changed zoning from SR 2.5 to RS zoning. Unfortunately, Glen Vista Road itself is a 40-foot wide wide right of way. And Ms. Kendall's objections to the roadway are essentially that it's not there yet, which was kind of the 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 problems with the sewer pump station when we put it in years ago. And I'll just briefly side note on that. The city has just been here. There are still cones and things in the road. They've finally addressed and apparently fixed from our perspective, and we're the closest living to that station being on our property to eliminate the smells. Now, to get back to the main thing, our engineer, Beacon Engineering, girl drew a shadow plat for our property, which is not addressed in this, that somebody could go back to the record and see what we proposed, and so that we do meet our our standards one way or another. We're not happy with the city standards of reducing or increasing the size of Glen Vista Road pavement laying width from 32 that we had agreed upon with city engineering prior to applying for our subdivision. We had agreed that there would be an increase in in pavement width from 24 feet that it is currently to 32 feet. And we would put in a 10-foot-wide multimodal pathway, which would include bicycle traffic as well as pedestrian traffic, get them off of the road. All that would go in with our subdivision. However, engineering is now requiring that we go to a 36-foot-wide paved road on Glen Vista that we put in curbs on both sides of that road right now in as part of our development. So I know AKS Venture Properties are all trying to follow our lead, which is really not leading. We're just trying to accommodate, to allow the development. And all these small pieces to, again, back to Lori Kendall's comments, have to be considered, or you don't meet state requirements for development when you annex the urban growth boundary back in 1999, and then for land supply for 20 years when you recently changed the city limits and or upzone property from underlying larger parcel zoning. So we're we're stuck on this idea of how how do these small parcels develop when there is an irrigation right of way. I think AKS shows that right of way at 74 feet. SWALI currently claims a 50-foot right of way. However, I've got written record that's been induced to all the records that we've applied for showing that the reality was that SWALI had asked for a 30-foot right of way, and and as granted, as low as 20-foot right of ways. However, they mean they remain a major obstacle, as does the the topography. So you have a major rock ridge at the north end of our property that continues on to the west and and recedes to the north as it crosses Peterson's property, the property to the east of the subdivision in question. And then the the bridge is across and off of the Klein property as it proceeds to the Knoll property. When it hits Knoll's property, the ridge turns directly south. And the irrigation ditch is trapped in front of that ridge. So in essence, unless SWALI irrigation abandons this canal, there is any way that I can see to develop these properties, whether it's the the cul-de-sac that AKS proposes at the end of their local street, which is Vista Meadow Lane. That cul-de-sac is shown on Peterson's property, not on the Klein property, and it would wipe out 3,600-square-foot custom-built home, a second dwelling area above a shop building that are already on the Peterson property. The topography of the Peterson property and the boundary lines of the property make it virtually impossible to develop without removing those houses. And again, even the lots that would be created at that point off of the cul-de-sac on Peterson's property would cross the ditch, much like the lots would have to cross the irrigation ditch on Knoll's property to be viable. In other words, you can't build a house in the middle of a irrigation ditch right of way, and you can't move that right of way. So it's like having a railroad go through your property or something. It's is it potentially possible to do? Yeah. But is it practical? No. And so I had submitted earlier on in the planning hearing and so forth, that a shadow plat showing how it could be done with a street going directly to the west about approximately 100 feet north of Glen Vista Road, off of their Vista Meadow Road, and it would hit the Knoll property at a point where there actually could be a 10% grade street going up through there. Again, the lots are that layout in reality. I mean, I can draw something on a piece of paper, as I've done for, you know, more than 35 years that I was a builder and developer here. But it they don't work. It doesn't matter whether you draw them or not. It's whether or not you can build on them because that's the ultimate goal of this whole development process, is to be able to build residences on here. And as the city, when the city took in this last go-around of the urban growth boundary, they took into consideration traffic issues, et cetera. Glen Vista Road beforehand was a local street and on the city street plan. And then the TSP comes along and says, oh, we want a collector. Why? Because the Gopher Gulfs Ranch at the time was, you know, potentially going to be subdivided into thousands of houses. And the connector road at the end of Glen Vista would traverse that property from north to south and and turn back east and come out on Cooley Road. However, there's no sewer. There's no station to provide sewer. There's no the former Gopher Gulfs Ranch pump station is defunct now. And then ultimately, what what causes the end of Glen Vista Road to become ineffective for a large-scale development is the fact that the property has already been taken apart. Gopher Gulfs Ranch is now 180-some acres of Riley Preserve, plus more being purchased up along the river. The property is being developed by Elkins in large lots. And so the north end of the property, where it could have developed into three golf courses and 1,000 houses as proposed by Taylor and Brooks Resources years ago, is gone. So the need for a collector of a major So the need for a collector of a major size to the, the west from OB Riley to the end of Glen Vista Road is no longer required. And in fact, uh, I would have proposed, and I actually sent, uh, an idea to the, um, on September fifteenth, uh, to the planning, um, department regarding, uh, the Klein property and, and our property to reduce that back to the thirty-two-foot wide road width and a ten-foot wide multimodal pathway, bicycle lanes non-existent on the traffic, in the traffic lane, uh, for safety issues as the road curves, uh, to the south and curves back again to the west. And we do see a tremendous amount of traffic. We walk this road, uh, regularly. Uh, having lived here for, uh, essentially seventy-three years, um, I purchased this property from my parents in nineteen eighty-eight, so, uh, but no matter how long anybody else has lived around this area, I guess I'm the oldest resident in this neighborhood. But I'm also the one that wants to develop, uh, because we are in the city, we are being surrounded by houses, apartments, et cetera, and we know this is going to happen. So let's do it practically. And a waiver to the standards, uh, on Glen Vista Road are a must. And if the city actually were going to complain about the city and their lack of a, of a plan, how do you herd cats? Because that's what you've got. You've got all these property owners that are small parcels in here, and you know they're all going to develop. Well, unless you're a Mike tenant and can, uh, purchase, uh, large amounts of property and develop Northwest Crossing or something like that, then it, it isn't going to happen that way. It's going to be piecemeal and, and we, the small people who live here, uh, trying to say, well, let's develop and leave this area because it's no longer what we want. Uh, that's a, that's something we can do. We can vote with our feet, but we need to have the city's cooperation. And a waiver is the way to go. A variance with hearings and more money and more money and more money, uh, thrown at this project really isn't going to solve anything. But as to the proposal by, uh, Venture Properties, Klein, AKS, or whoever, uh, their shadow plat can be modified to show a cul-de-sac not on Peterson's property and a street going west about a hundred feet north of Glen Vista Road onto the Noel property, right where the rocky ridge shallows out and right where Noel's driveway is now. That could be allowed for development, not only Noel's property, but, but then again, because he would have to provide a to-and-through, would, would provide access to the Culver, Culvers property to the west of the Noel property. So as you look at all the major factors in this area here, I think that, uh, the city proposal to, uh, or the, the AKS proposal to, uh, widen Glen Vista Road and provide a multimodal pathway is, uh, sufficient for that. As far as access to Noel's property, I had submitted, uh, a copy to planning, to Noel's, Peterson, to Klein, uh, everybody, showing our shadow plat for Kiso Vista and how uh, their shadow plat could encourage actual lot development on the Peterson property, which is the property to the east, which would not cause their house to be eliminated. Uh, which, of course, when you're, in, in essence, I guess, really, let's look back and say, is the Peterson property developable or is it already developed? And my suggestion is it is already developed. If you want to covet it up into more lots, then I've done, uh, a shadow plat that shows how it can be done. And, uh, again, um, you know, I, I have thirty-five years of experience at doing this sort of thing on small pieces of property, whether it's five lots on Kingston, whether it's, uh, five, uh, multifamily lots on Noel Avenue, uh, whether, uh, Stanion Canyon property, uh, a number of times I've done, you know, five, six, seven lot, uh, developments. And so I think I do know a little bit about what I'm talking about, plus building houses on every type of topography you can think of. And I can take a look at this and say, well, how are you going to do this? What are you, you're going to give, uh, a part of the house here and then fifty feet away across the ditch? The other part of the house is Swally even going to let you cross the irrigation ditch, which is the problem that we've run into here. Uh, and, uh, so you're opening a can of worms if you don't utilize some, uh, appropriate authority of the city to, uh, do what needs to be done. In other words, to waive some of these standards that do not fit, rather than trying to cram everything into a box. Okay, that's the end of what I want to say. And then I did want to tell you that I'm on the phone talking to you. However, watching live on YouTube, we have a discrepancy of probably a couple of minutes. Uh, the phone and the audio is ahead of your live YouTube broad, broadcast. Makes it a little bit difficult, just to let you know. And I would also like to keep the record over, open, uh, so I can present this stuff in a coherent manner, maybe, uh, written. Or you could look back as, well, uh, uh, you know, Ms. Marshall, at the comments that I made September fifteenth, uh, to the, um, city, a record for PZ twenty oh one eight six. Um, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr.
I'll be able to hear you all, see you doing something else on TV.
That's strange about the, the delay. Um, thank you, Mr. Kiso. Uh, I think we have another, um, attendee that wishes to participate. Mr. Almeida.
We do. Thank you very much. Next, we have Jim Bushman. Jim, uh, now you should be able to unmute yourself. Uh, please proceed with your comment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is James Boschman. And I live at six three six one zero Boyd Acres Road. I'm associated with the, uh, Boyd Acres Neighborhood Association. And, uh, we did comment on the, uh, the road configuration as, uh, we are very interested in, uh, upgrading, uh, pedestrian access and making sure it's safety along, safe along, uh, Glen Vista. And, uh, while, so I'd like to address, uh, appeal issue, uh, one. And, uh, while you might consider major, uh, collector standards, um, we felt that, uh, the requested waiver was, uh, probably sus- sufficient and, uh, would be the minimum that, uh, should be done. And that would be the thirty-six, uh, foot of pavement. And that would include the, uh, ten-foot multi-use path. And then, uh, a planter strip, eleven foot planters strip, six-foot, uh, bike lane, two twelve-foot, uh, driving lanes. And then another, uh, six-foot, uh, bike lane. And then possibly a future, uh, sidewalk on the, uh, south side. So, uh, whether those are, uh, whether those proceed as a waiver or a variance, we would like to, uh, reiterate that that would be the, probably the minimum standard. So we're interested in preserving and upgrading the, uh, the access, the pedestrian access to, uh, Riley Ranch and to the neighborhood that's, uh, being developed. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I, I can't attempt to say your last name, but thank you so much for, uh, your testimony. Um, Mr. Almeida, do we have any other attendees that still have hands up or that wish to participate?
Not at this time, we don't.
Okay. Uh, all right. I think, uh, we have, uh, allowed everyone, uh, to participate, um, in this public hearing, uh, setting. Um, as I mentioned at the outset, uh, we're going to take a five-minute. Uh, Mr. Robinson, is five minutes adequate for you, or do you wish a little bit longer of a recess?
Uh, would the hearings officer please grant ten minutes?
Yes.
And we'll, but we'll come back as quickly as we can.
Okay, great. Um, yes, absolutely. So we're going to leave this running. Um, it's eleven forty-one AM. Um, uh, as soon as Mr. Robinson is, is finished speaking with, uh, the applicant and, um, members of the team, uh, we will reconvene uh, no less than, uh, no later than eleven fifty-one AM. but there are provisions in the code that kind of allow additional flexibility for, for those properties that are constrained in those ways. To the question of precluding development, you know, Mr. Van Vactor and Mr. Noel set this standard as a very high bar that has to be cleared. And when we look at this code section, we think it's actually quite a low bar. The definition of development in the development code is very broad and it could be argued that because these abutting properties have homes on them today, that that constitutes development. If there's any disagreement around that, you know, we tried to be conservative in showing a future kind of higher and better use type of development for these properties. And we showed detached, single-family homes in a subdivision. But there's a whole list of permitted uses for RS zone properties beyond subdivision, beyond just single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes. So there, again, there are multiple possibilities and flexibility for the future development potential of these properties. If in fact, the fact that there's development on the properties today is not enough to meet that, that test of that code criteria. Ms. Kendall, I think, raised some great points and it's maybe a little bit of frustration that we experienced in going through there, through this process. You know, her argument around having a larger comprehensive plan for this area, you know, based on the size of all these individual properties, I don't disagree with that, but that's not kind of the, the standards or criteria that this application needs to be judged against. And I, I'm sure the hearings officer Marshall understands that, but I think it's worth saying for anybody else who's, who's watching. We're, we're subject to the, the code requirements in effect on the day that the application was submitted. Ms. Kendall was also concerned about the safety of Glen Vista Road and pedestrian connectivity. And I thank James Boishman for voicing his support once again and the support of the Boyd Acres Neighborhood Association. I can, I can try to quickly address this. There's, there's, I think, some misunderstanding that the current condition of Glen Vista Road is somehow going to be continued. And it's not so currently there, there are no sidewalks on Glen Vista Road. It's a narrow 40-foot right-of-way and what our plan, our planned improvements for Glen Vista Road do, and again, this is consistent with the improvements approved in the KISO subdivision to the east creates this, this cross-section. I hope you can see my cursor. Let me see. So this, this establishes the, the future cross-section that we intend to build for Glen Vista Road. And what that shows is that we're dedicating 20 additional feet from our, our property to create this 36-foot paved improvement. And that improvement includes two 12-foot travel lanes and two six-foot bike lanes within the curb, curved and paved section. In addition, we're proposing to provide a 10-foot multi-use path along the north side of the road, which is, I would argue, a better improvement enhances pedestrian connectivity and pedestrian safety more than your standard five or six-foot setback. So we're proposing a curb and grade separated 10-foot wide path on the north side. When properties to the south side of Glen Vista Road would develop, they would be required to dedicate their 20 feet. And we will have built to the southern curb, but they'll be required to, you know, based on the current standard, build a sidewalk on the south side when their property develops. So just to clarify that, that question, that concern about pedestrian safety. And again, thanking the Boyd Acres Neighborhood Association for their, their comments and support. Mr. Kiso, Mr. Kiso made some comments kind of echoing the constraints, both on Mr. Noel's property and Mr. Kiso's. Again, you know, the, you know, our test is not to overcome any sort of individual constraints on these adjacent properties. But are we doing anything with, with this project that precludes development of those properties based on, on the development code, the Ben Development Code? And specifically around the Swally irrigation ditch that exists, we had extended coordinated communication with Swally. And, and one thing we did discuss at points was whether it made sense to pipe the existing ditch, which would provide more area for development. Based on where the ditch is located on the subject property, that was less of a concern. We were able to work around that. But that does remain a viable option for these adjacent properties that feel overly encumbered or burdened by the irrigation ditch and the easements on top of it. We work on several projects across all the different irrigation districts in central Oregon. And it's not uncommon when you have the right project to, to go ahead and ditch, ditch, or excuse me, pipe and irrigation ditch to give yourself more developable area. So there, these are all kind of options that speak to how many multiple opportunities there are for development of these adjacent properties. That's all I have at this point. I think Mike has some comments and Mike, you can feel free to send it back to me if there's something that I may have missed.
Thanks, Joey. Ms. Marshall, Mike Robinson again on behalf of the applicant. My mailing address is 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 1900, Portland, Oregon 97204. So two initial comments, I think Joey did a nice job of addressing testimony by Ms. Kendall, Mr. Kiso and Mr. Boishman. And I won't have anything further to say, but we, of course, appreciate the fact they took their time to talk today. And then secondly, as I said earlier, when the hearings officer is ready, we have an open record proposal to give to the hearings officer and the other parties. And assuming that the hearings officer accepts that open record period, we would extend the clock by the amount of that period. So you have additional time which to issue the decision. So let me first talk about Mr. Van Vactor's testimony. And Joey, thanks for your good rebuttal cover things you talked about. I'll just mention a few things. First of all, I want to point out the staff did a nice job at, at page five of 11 of their report to the hearings officer explaining why a waiver is appropriate. And at page six of 11 in the staff report to the hearings officer explaining why the variance isn't required. And those reasons were also explained in applicant's number 18, 2020 letter. The appellant's arguments are inconsistent with the text and context of the Ben Development Code with respect to those sections. They're asking the hearings officer, as they ask staff, to ignore the plain language and require variance when a variance in fact isn't required. As staff has said, the applicant appropriately asked for a waiver. He met the approval criteria for the waiver and staff granted it. And I've not heard, if I, if I missed this, my apologies, but I haven't heard a appellant argue that the waiver standards themselves weren't met. I think that just the structure of the code itself explains why the staff is correct. And that is 3.4.150, which is the waiver standard, precedes 3.4.200, which is the improvement standard. And that's logical. It, it doesn't talk about requiring a variance. And so that section of the code, the context makes perfect sense to the staff and it makes sense to the applicant as well. The second issue is this code criterion that our proposal not prevent development of the, or must allow development of the adjacent property. And I think everyone views that code language as effectively meaning we can't do something in our subdivision proposal that would preclude development of the property. The appellate takes it much further and suggests that we have to address every development issue. And that's just not what the code says. That's beyond the plain language of the code. But more importantly, the code doesn't use the word current. So if the appellate decided that he didn't want to develop now, he wants to wait 20 years. How could one assure that we would have any ability? He, there's nothing we could do to assure that our subdivision would do everything he wanted it to do when he decided to develop. That's simply, that's another reason that, that the appellant's read of the code is, is incorrect. And I think both Joey, the applicant, and Joey and the applicant's work and staff and their analysis have explained that we've provided utilities in roads tax lot 700, which is on the east side. And then we've got utilities accessing 101 on the west side. Plus, it's clear from the evidence in the record that tax lot 101 has substantial or has sufficient frontage on Glen Vista to do the street. And I appreciate the fact that, that the appellant believes that we should take care of his inherent properties or problems with his property. But it's a given that not every property is equally developable. So his property has a canal. It has rock outcroppings. It may be that he simply can't overcome all of those and he's not able to do everything that he'd hoped he might do. Or if he can do it, it's going to cost him more money. But that doesn't change what the code requires and there's no requirement that we either develop to make his development easier. We just have to make sure that our development allows development of his property, which it does. There's also no requirement that we give him a plan for his own property. I think it's, we did a future street plan. That's pretty common. And I think that's consistent with what the code would envision because it demonstrates that our development allows development of his property. I also want to point out two code divisions that the appellant did not address. The first is.
Mike, your audio a little bit.
How's that? Is that better, Ms. Marshall? Thanks. So I was trying to be quiet there, I guess. The first is on pages 11 and 12 of the decision that's been appealed. That's, it's under 3.1.200.3. And the findings are found on page 12, but the standard says on tracks containing watercourses or rock outcroppings, increased water parcel sizes may be required to allow adequate room for development and protection of the topographic or natural features. The appellate didn't appeal that finding and the appeal or the decision does a good job of explaining that. Well, and I think they primarily addressed our property. But the point is the code recognizes that in some cases, you're not going to get all the development you think you're going to get. Because in this case of rock outcroppings or watercourses. Second point I make is that, that the things that the appellant is complaining of are pretty common, Ben. Even though I don't live there and I've not done nearly as many projects as the appellant, it's obvious to me that almost every product has either the potential or has rock outcroppings, some of which are protected more than others, but rock outcroppings and also watercourses principally in the forms of canals. It's just a factor of development that one has to deal with. And it doesn't change the code to say that we have to alleviate those inherent deficiencies in that property to make it easier for them to develop. Effectively, what the appellate wants to do is to, is to design our project to benefit his. That's not what the code requires. The other point I want to mention is the to and through argument. That's found on pages 13 and 14 of the decision. The criterion is found on pages 13 and 14, but then the finding that the director made is on page 14. This finding was also not appealed by appellate and it says, let me go back and read what the standard says. So this is 3.1.200D, street connectivity and formation of blocks. And sub one says, new developments shall construct and extend planned streets. It doesn't just say streets, it says planned streets. And the finding at page 14 of the decision says, quote, "There are no planned streets affecting the subject property," end quote. So while the appellant believes there is a to and through requirement, there is, but only for planned streets. And there is no planned street in this area. So we're not obligated to do the plan that the appellant thinks we should. As I said, I wasn't going to address the testimony of the other three witnesses. I think Joey did a nice job of doing that. So I think, Ms. Marshall, that's everything we have to offer in the way of rebuttal. We think we've sustained our burden of proof. There's nothing in the two appeal issues that the appellant maintains that would require the hearings officer to reverse or otherwise modify the director's decision. And we think that the decision is, I know it's de novo and you're not effectively affirming you're writing your own decision, but the approval criteria is satisfied by substantial evidence in the whole record. So we would ask you to approve the application with the condition of approval in addition to the two modified conditions recommended in the staff report to the hearings officer. Ben, you tell me when you're ready to talk about the open record period. I believe, Ms. Marshall, unless you have questions that you'd like the applicant's team to answer, that concludes our rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I appreciate your time and everyone else's that have done such a great job preparing and setting forth and screenshots and the, and all of that has been very helpful. Let's go ahead and talk about the requests for the record to be left open. I understand the applicant has proposal in that regard. So, Mr. Robinson, please.
Thank you. So I understand from the planner that the clock now ends. Let me make sure I've got this right. On December 22nd, that's 120 days after August 24th completeness. So we want to make sure the hearings officer has enough time to issue her decision, including the open record period. So we were proposed three seven-day periods. The first would end a week from today on Monday, December 7th at 5:00 for anyone to submit argument and evidence as those terms are defined in 1977639. The second seven-day period would end on Monday, December 14th at 5:00 for anyone to rebut what came in during the first open record period. And then the third open record period would end on Monday, December 21st at 5:00. This would be applicant only to submit final written argument without new evidence. And we would extend the 120, the applicant would extend the 120-day period by the period of the three weeks, 21 days from December 21st until January 5, 2021.
Thank you. And, and yes, I was looking at the, looking at what a 21-day period would, would entail.
ditch or excuse me, pipe and irrigation ditch to give yourself more developable area. So there, these are all kind of options that speak to how many multiple opportunities there are for development of these adjacent properties. That's all I have at this point. I think Mike has some comments and Mike, you can feel free to send it back to me if there's something that I may have missed.
Thanks, Joey. Ms. Marshall, Mike Robinson again on behalf of the applicant. My mailing address is 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue Suite 1900, Portland, Oregon 97204. So two initial comments. I think Joey did a nice job of addressing testimony by Ms. Kendall, Mr. Kiso, and Mr. Boishman, and I won't have anything further to say, but we, of course, appreciate the fact they took their time to talk today. And then secondly, as I said earlier, when the hearings officer is ready, we have an open record proposal to give to the hearings officer and the other parties. And assuming that the hearings officer accepts that open record period, we would extend the clock by the amount of that period. So you have additional time in which to issue the decision. So let me first talk about Mr. Van Vactor's testimony. And Joey, thanks for your good rebut cover things you talked about. I'll just mention a few things. First of all, I want to point out the staff did a nice job at at page five of 11 of their report to the hearings officer explaining why a waiver is appropriate. And at page six of 11 in the staff report at hearings officer explaining why the variance isn't required. And those reasons were also explained in applicant's number 18, 2020 letter. The appellant's arguments are inconsistent with the text and context of the bend development code with respect to those sections. They're asking the hearings officer, as they ask staff, to ignore the plain language and require variance when a variance, in fact, isn't required. As staff has said, the applicant appropriately asked for a waiver. We met the approval criteria for the waiver and staff granted it. And I've not heard, if I if I missed this, my apologies, but I haven't heard a poll and argue that the waiver standards themselves weren't met. I think that just the structure of the code itself explains why the staff is correct, and that is 3.4.150, which is the waiver standard, precedes 3.4.200, which is the improvement standard. And that's logical. It doesn't talk about requiring a variance. And so that section of the code, the context makes perfect sense to the staff and it makes sense to the applicant as well. The second issue is this code criterion that our proposal not prevent development of the or must allow development of the adjacent property. And I think everyone views that code language as effectively meaning we can't do something in our subdivision proposal that would preclude development of the property. The appellate takes it much further and suggests that we have to address every development issue. And that's just not what the code says. That's beyond the plain language of the code. But more importantly, the code doesn't use the word current. So if the appellate decided that he didn't want to develop now, he wants to wait 20 years. How could one assure that we would have any ability? He, there's nothing we could do to assure that our subdivision would do everything he wanted it to do when he decided to develop. That's simply, that's another reason that his that the appellate's read of the code is is incorrect. And I think both Joey, the applicant, and Joey and the applicant's work and staff and their analysis have explained that we've provided utilities in roads to tax lot 700, which is on the east side. And then we've got utilities accessing 101 on the west side. Plus, it's clear from the evidence in the record that tax lot 101 has substantial or has sufficient frontage on Glen Vista to do the street. And I appreciate the fact that that the appellate believes that we should take care of his inherent properties or problems with his property. But it's a given that not every property is equally developable. So his property has a canal. It has rock outcroppings. It may be that he simply can't overcome all of those and he's not able to do everything that he'd hoped he might do. Or if he can do it, it's going to cost him more money. But that doesn't change what the code requires. And there's no requirement that we either develop to make his development easier. We just have to make sure that our development allows development of his property, which it does. There's also no requirement that we give him a plan for his own property. I think it's, we did a future street plan. That's pretty common. And I think that's consistent with what the code would envision because it demonstrates that our development allows development of his property. I also want to point out two code divisions that the appellate did not address. The first is
Mike, your audio a little bit.
How's that? Is that better, Ms. Marshall? Thanks. So I was trying to be quiet there, I guess. The first is on pages 11 and 12 of the decision been appealed. That's it's under 3.1.200.3. And the findings are found on page 12, but the standard says on tracks containing watercourses or rock outcroppings, increased water parcel sizes may be required to allow inadequate room for development and protection of the topographic or natural features. The appellate didn't appeal that finding and the appeal or the decision does a good job of explaining that, well, and I think they primarily addressed our property, but the point is the code recognizes that in some cases, you're not going to get all the development you think you're going to get. Because in this case of rock outcroppings or watercourses. Second point I make is that the the things that the appellate is complaining of are pretty common, Ben, even though I don't live there and I've not done nearly as many projects as the appellate, it's obvious to me that almost every product has either the potential or has rock outcropping, some of which are protected more than others, but rock outcroppings and also watercourses principally in forms of canals. It's just a factor of development that one has to deal with. And it doesn't change the code to say that we have to alleviate those inherent deficiencies in that property to make it easier for them to develop. Effectively, what the appellate wants to do is to is to design our project to benefit his. That's not what the code requires. The other point I want to mention is the two and through argument. That's filed on pages 13 and 14 of the decision. The criterion is found on pages 13 and 14, but then the finding that the director made is on page 14. This finding was also not appealed by appellate and it says, let me go back and read what the standard says. So this is 3.1.200D, street connectivity and formation of blocks. And sub one says, new developments shall construct and extend planned streets. It doesn't just say streets. It says planned streets. And the finding at page 14 of the decision says, quote, there are no planned streets affecting the subject property, end quote. So while the appellate believes there is a two and three requirement, there is, but only for planned streets. And there is no planned street in this area. So we're not obligated to do the plan that the appellate thinks we should. As I said, I wasn't going to address the testimony of the other three witnesses. I think Joey did a nice job of doing that. So I think, Ms. Marshall, that's everything we have to offer in the way of rebuttal. We think we've sustained our burden of proof. There's nothing in the two appeal issues that the appellate maintains that would require the hearings officer to reverse or otherwise modify the director's decision. And we think that the decision is, I know it's de novo and you're not effectively affirming you're writing your own decision, but the approval criteria is satisfied by substantial evidence in the whole record. So we would ask you to approve the application with the condition of approval in addition to the two modified conditions recommended in the staff report to the hearings officer. Then you tell me when you're ready to talk about the open record period. I believe, Ms. Marshall, unless you have questions that you'd like the applicant's team to answer, that concludes our rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I appreciate your time and everyone else's that have done such a great job preparing and setting forth and screenshots and the and all of that has been very helpful. Let's go ahead and talk about the requests for the record to be left open. I understand the applicant has proposal in that regard. So, Mr. Robinson, please.
Thank you. So I understand from the planner that the clock now ends, let me make sure I've got this right, on December 22nd. That's 120 days after August 24th completeness. So we want to make sure the hearings officer has enough time to issue her decision, including the open record period. So we propose three seven-day periods. The first would end a week from today on Monday, December 7th at 5:00 for anyone to submit argument and evidence as those terms are defined in 1977639. The second seven-day period would end on Monday, December 14th at 5:00 for anyone to rebut what came in during the first open record period. And then the third open record period would end on Monday, December 21st at 5:00. This would be applicant only to submit final written argument without new evidence. And we would extend the 120, the applicant would extend the 120-day period by the period of the three weeks, 21 days from December 21st until January 5, 2021.
Thank you. And yes, I was looking at the, looking at what a 21-day period would would entail. And yeah, so so extending that clock, I think, is is not only necessary, it's it's critical here. I I agree that first of all, I agree that the record should be left open. And typically, as Mr. Robinson just outlined, it's a 777. The first seven-day period is for submission of new evidence, arguments, whatever that you'd like the hearings officer to consider in the context of this appeal. The second seven-day period is for rebuttal only. So anybody that wishes to submit anything in that second seven-day period ending on December 14th would be strictly limited to rebuttal of what was submitted during the first open record period, which would end on the 7th. And then the final seven-day period is for the applicant only. The applicant only may submit final written argument by December 21st. And and I will have Ms. Anselman go over how the city will receive those materials. They can be addressed to me, but they don't go to me through my email or anything. It's all through the city and and the city will be uploading everything to ePlans as well. So Sarah, do you mind going over that for a few moments?
Of course. Email is usually the best way to get comments to me. They can be mailed to the city as well. Let me spell my email address. It's sanselman@bendoregon.gov. That's S.A.N.S. as in Sam, E.L.M.E.N.T. at bendoregon, spell out Oregon, dot G O V. And the city's mailing address, I did receive one mailed comment from someone. So just in case, the mailing address can be also addressed to Sarah Anselman, Attention Planning Department. It's 710 Northwest Wall Street, Bend, Oregon 97703. There's also staff at City Hall. If anything needs to be dropped off, they can get it to me. But again, if possible, emailing documents to me is best. And then I can upload them to ePlans. The city is switching to new software. I believe ePlans will continue to be read only so anyone can still go to ePlans and look at all the documents and download them as well if you want to save it as a PDF on your own computer just to make viewing easier.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anselman. And I believe I've mentioned it would be helpful to the hearings officer for the applicant and the appellate to provide copies of the PowerPoint presentations that were put forth today and any other screen sharing that illustrated argument as it was being made today. So with that, we we will adhere to the open record deadlines that we just went over.
Can I request a point of clarification on those deadlines? I think Mike suggested a 5:00 p.m. cutoff time. I think the the counters closes at 4:00. So if Sarah or the hearings officer can confirm for everybody, what time is the cutoff for submittal of those materials, please?
I can leave it up to the hearings officer. Since we don't have a physical counter with the work from home, we've been a little bit more flexible on this.
Correct.
I like the extra hour for what it's worth. I don't know about Will.
You're asking a lot.
I know. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Yes, it's it's helpful to have it set, you know, whether it's four or five. And to be honest, this did come up in another hearing recently. So if if the parties are asking for five and it doesn't sound like five is a problem, especially given the current COVID situation. I'm okay with it if Ms. Anselman is okay with a 5:00 p.m. deadline on each of those dates, 12/7, 12/14, and 12/21.
Yeah, that that can work for me. I can be at my, I can be checking email and uploading up until, well, you have until 5:00. So shortly after 5:00 o'clock, yes, I can facilitate that.
Fantastic. Okay, well, I wanted to thank everyone for attending today and thank you both Sarah and Juan for facilitating so well. And I appreciate everybody's thoughtful presentations and looking forward to reading what comes in over the the next few weeks. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at the time. Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.